Hi and welcome to our candidate forum here at 91.3 Hope FM. We are going to introduce you today to two of the candidates running for Putnam County Board of County Commission District Two. That's Jeff Rawls and Leota Wilkinson. In the primary election in August, only registered Republicans will be voting in this race, and then the winner is going to face off with a Democratic candidate in November. Rather than have our forum on the radio as we've done in the past, we've partnered with Gospel Vision TV to record these and make them available at your convenience, and I hope that you'll check out some of the other forums that we've done as well, or watch them on Gospel Vision. Now, the candidates have been furnished with a list of questions, and they're going to each get one minute to answer each question, and we'll also alternate who goes first, so nobody has to start first with each one. We do have a one-minute limit, and we have a timer that'll go off, so I just ask that you wrap up your answer within a couple of questions if you do hear the timer. The whole thing should last about 30 minutes. Both Hope FM and Gospel Vision are nonprofit ministries. We don't endorse any candidates or any parties, and that's why we feel like we can do just a great public service by offering these candidate forums. We don't do any political advertising either. With all that being said, we want to meet our candidates, and we're going to let Jeff Rawls go first. He's the incumbent in this position, serving on the Board of County Commission. So tell us why you want to continue to serve, and tell us a little bit about yourself.
So I moved to Putnam County in 1988. I have two daughters. I have a nine-year-old, soon-to-be-nine-year-old son. He's currently in the school system. Having served in the military, working in the fire department, and living in Putnam County for as long as I have, I just see a huge need for us to continue to make strides to get the public to be more involved and to allow more involvement from the public in our government. I feel like we have so many opportunities that are missed, and I think that by being reelected, I'll be the voice for the people to be able to fill in some of these voids that we've had. Most recently with the ARPA money, you know, we rejected all the NGOs that actually provide valuable services that the county commission is required to serve, to provide under Chapter 125. But we shirk our responsibilities and then make the public, these nonprofit, non-government organizations, struggle to provide things like safe housing for domestic violence victims, substance abuse, and mental health disorders, food banking. We could have done a lot for the community. My name is Jeff. Thank you.
And Leota Wilkinson, same question. Tell us about yourself and why you want to be a county commissioner.
Good morning, Robin. Thank you for having me. To tell you a little bit about myself, this is my hometown. I grew up here. I've lived here for 43 years. Graduate of the public school system, graduated in 1988. Shortly thereafter, married my high school sweetheart, Eugene Wilkinson. And we've, this year, we'll celebrate 34 years of marriage. We have three sons and five granddaughters, and I'm very vested in Putnam County. I've been involved in the community on a number of boards, currently serving on Bread of Life, Feed the Need, and First Coast Community Credit Union Audit Committee. I'm a realtor, a small business owner, and I just want to see Putnam County move forward in a positive direction, so that one day our grandchildren want to call Putnam County home, and I feel like that I bring a different perspective to the board and can help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with you, Leota. What experience do you have that you feel qualifies you to serve in this position?
Thank you. You know, I have an AS degree in business management, an AS degree in financial management from St. John's River College, right here in Putnam County. I also have a bachelor's degree in public administration from Flagler College. I earned those degrees while working full-time and raising my children, so I know how hard work pays off. And I also have over 21 years' experience working in state government. I worked 15 years at St. John's River Water Management District, where I started out in the accounting department and worked my way up to senior land acquisition agent there. And then for the past six years, I've worked as the district aide to State Representative Bobby Payne. So I have over 21 years' experience in state government, and also an extensive background in the private sector in accounting and financial management. So I feel like that those qualifications would certainly serve the citizens of Putnam County well and help me be qualified for the position. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Jeff, you're already serving in the position, but tell us about your experience and why you feel that qualifies you.
So, you know, if you look at my background, I served in the Navy, worked as on flight deck of an aircraft carrier, then I went into being a firefighter, then paramedic, and working in the private sector, worked in the public sector, own my business for 21 years now. I've got a different perspective on how government could and should operate. I really feel like, like I was saying before, we've missed a lot of opportunities. Being able to come in and look at how the government's operating and seeing that we have some change that needs to be made is not a bad thing. As a current elected official, one of my duties is to ask questions and investigate. That's part of Chapter 125 and our requirements. A lot of people think that I'm pushing against the grain. The truth is, is I'm exposing things that really need to be discussed openly, so we, so when we're hit with this economy that we're facing right now, we can answer questions. One of the questions you're going to ask later on has to do with housing. That's an immense problem in Putnam County. A lot of the problems that we have right now are foreseeable. Things that I've done since elected, helping get employees' pay raises, helping bring transparency to the government. I'll discuss other things. My time's up. Thank you.
Okay, well, for the next question, do you feel that you've made improvements so far in your service as a county commissioner?
Absolutely. So, you know, going back to the first Thursday of January 2019, there was a massive turnout for a town hall meeting that happened. The town hall meeting wouldn't have happened if I hadn't started having town hall meetings around the community. At first, the other commissioners didn't want to get involved in it. I was going through these things by myself, but I was engaging the communities and going to the different areas, being in Alarkin and Barton, Bosworth, Crescent City, and Willack, and learning the differences and nuances of these areas. So then this turnout happens regarding fire rescue. A lot of that had to do with the conversation. I got started in the background. Pay raises for employees that didn't have pay raises for 10 years, and were still very anemic in that category. Being able to bring up the animal services building and getting it to the next level, although we didn't go the direction I think we should have gone, I think there's a much less expensive way to build it and get it done quicker, the commission decided to go in a different direction. Substance use and mental health disorders, bringing that to the forefront, bringing it out and having a conversation robustly on a continuous basis, those are some of the things that I've done.
Okay, thank you. And Leota, how do you think that you would make improvements to our county by serving on the county commission?
Well, you know, I bring a different perspective to the board, a fresh perspective. You know, one of a woman of a mother, a grandmother, a realtor, a small business owner, and community service volunteer, along with, you know, excuse me, along with a governmental employee. So I understand what Jeff is saying about, you know, bringing up the pay raises for governmental employees. It's certainly something that we need to look at. You know, I feel like I can bring some civility to the board. I have the ability to ask questions and push back and still be civil with fellow board members. I think we need to lead by example as county commissioners and set the tone for the county.
And if you are elected, what would your top priorities be?
Smart economic growth. We're going to see a lot of growth come to Putnam County, but we've got to have good policies in place that protect our citizens and our local way of life while balancing this growth. Supporting law enforcement and our first responders. Public safety should be our number-one priority, and our lives of our citizens depend on the professionalism of our public safety personnel. And so they have to have the resources that they need to be able to do a good job. And also pushing for broadband. We saw in, during the COVID, that we had people working from home and students that couldn't get good internet service so that they could do what they needed to do at home. And we just need to get providers to the table. We need to let people know that the issues that we have with broadband in our rural area. So I think those are the three top priorities for me.
Okay, and Jeff, if you're reelected, what would your top priorities be?
That's an enormous question. Definitely finishing the conversation about how we're going to handle substance use disorders in Putnam County and being able to get help to those folks. Getting the animal services shelter finished up, that's got to be a top priority. Our housing issues, we've definitely got to get addressed. The employees that work for us right now, we got over half the employees making less than $13 an hour, but even when they are pushed to 15, with our starting housing starting in the mid-200s, they're going to be very strapped to be able to afford a basic rent or basic mortgage. That's going to be problematic for us as citizens, because we depend on teachers and nurses, paramedics, firefighters, EMTs, law enforcement. And if we can't provide for these folks, our public works departments, parks and recreation, all this stuff that we depend on every day, if we're not able to fund these departments and fully fund these positions, we're not going to be able to move ahead. We spend about $30,000, I'm told from the sheriff's department, to train one deputy. If they move out of county, we've just wasted $30,000. We could incentivize them to stick around, so my time's up. Thank you.
Well, roads are always a big concern with people here in our community, and not only paving dirt roads, but also the condition of the roadways here and safety. So what's your thoughts on improving our roadways?
So if you start with improving roadways, then you have to start with alternative funding methods. The other day, we received our budget, and it shows that we had a reduction in our gas tax dollars from the state. With that reduction in gas tax comes a reduction in maintenance of roads, because your roads primarily are built and maintained out of the gas tax money. There is some dollars out of Better Place Plan, but that's to take dirt roads and turn them into paved roads and then have to maintain them in the future. We just spent $168,000 out of Better Place to put up guardrails that should have come out of either our capital budget or out of our general fund budget, but it did. It came out of Better Place. We're spending $875,000 a year for the jail and debt service out of Better Place. We have to have a very vibrant conversation, vigorous conversation with the public about how we can raise alternative money. Every time you see an electrical vehicle going down the road, remember if they're full electric, they're not paying any gas tax. They're using the roads, they're using the infrastructure that we use to get around, and yet they're not paying anything. That's going to have to be a conversation we have to have at some point. I'm a locally elected official. I'm not state and federal. I can't speak to state and federal. I think this is going to have to be settled at a higher level, but it starts with us being able to get alternative funding.
Okay, and Leota, same question about the roads in our community.
We, you know, we do have a good dirt-to-pavement program, and the county's been able to pave more roads in the last few years than ever before. Unfortunately, right now, the county's facing a supply chain issue with asphalt, so that's put some delay on the current road projects they're working with. We do still have a Citizens Committee for the Better Place Plan funds, and I just believe that we need to make sure that the money that's dedicated in that program goes toward what the citizens voted for, which is continuing to improving our infrastructure and roads in Putnam County.
And along those same lines, the next question, what do you think about our current infrastructure? Is it adequate for where we are in the potential growth?
No, we definitely have a lot of aging infrastructure right here in Putnam County. You know, just where I live, we just replaced the bridge out in our area, and there's a bridge being replaced at 310. And so we've got to do a better job with that. The county's done a great job in working with the legislative process for appropriations. This past year, they've received over $10 million, and that was for infrastructure. And that doesn't include the $5 million that we saw the governor gave the city of Palaca, and then, of course, the $3 million where the governor was here last week with Town of Willack for infrastructure. So we just have to continue to work with the state and federal governments to bring those additional funds into Putnam County that we haven't received years ago. And I feel like my experience in that, in state government, and my background will definitely help with that process.
And Jeff, same question about infrastructure.
Absolutely. We don't have, we're not ready for that, but we're in the process of rewriting the land development code. Once we start that process, we really need to put the onus on the developers to be able to come in when they develop areas and put in the needed infrastructure, whether it be water storms, sewer paving, grading, and drainage. Those need to be provided by the person or the people that are developing the lots. They can either collect their money through CDD fees, or they can collect their money through bond issuances. They can collect, they can use their own private capital to do it, but either way, the money has to be paid for by the people that end up buying the houses. That's the infrastructure that they get that only services them. With regards to our current road situation in the Better Place Plan and the Dirt-to-Pave, there's so few roads paved with dirt-to-pave, from dirt-to-pave. Most of the money is not spent on actually paving new roads. We still have to go back and maintain some of those roads. If the Better Place Plan was not voted in by the citizens when it expires this round, there will be no money to maintain that. We also have a debt service on our water system that we pay for, and it's Plaquenaw Sewer System. And the $3.5 million that was given to Willack for their sewer system, we spent $14 million back in the mid, early 2000s for our current sewer system. Imagine what $3.5 million gets you when you look at that. Thank you.
This is something you mentioned earlier. We are seeing a lot of growth here, a lot of people moving to Putnam County. It's a great place to live, but it doesn't seem that we have enough adequate, affordable housing. So what are your thoughts on improving that?
So I had a conversation with Bill Lizar from the St. John's Housing Partnership this morning. He's sent an email out. He's frustrated that he believed that the city of Palaca reduced their minimum square footage to 1,500 square feet. From what I read, it's 1,200 square feet. His concern is, why are we restricting square-footed houses? And my answer to him was, if you allow someone to come in and build a 500-square-foot house inside your city limits, and you have to provide services like police, fire, rescue, and parks and recreation and all that, where does the money come from if you're allowing these smaller square footages? But the real conversation comes into what do you define as affordable housing? We need to be focusing not on the people that are making 40% and 60% and 80% of the area median income. We need to focus on people making 80% to 120%, because those folks aren't going to be able to do anything. And that is a backbone of our middle class, that is a backbone of our working class right now, and if you don't have that, we're going to have nothing here shortly. It's a very long conversation. It needs to be had. I can't get the conversation started locally, because nobody really seems to care enough to have the conversation about what we're truly going to define as affordable housing, because we do need police officers and firefighters and EMTs and nurses and all that that makes the world go round, and if they don't have a place that they can afford to live. And if you think humping a $240,000 mortgage is easy, it's not. It requires over $60,000 of annual household income, and we don't rise to that level in Putnam County. Thank you.
And Leota, same question. Your thoughts about housing?
You know, I look back at my lifetime, and Eugene and I started off in a single-wide trailer on Wilkinson Road, two-bedroom, one bath. And, you know, everybody has to start somewhere. My family rented houses growing up, and we were a working-class family. And, you know, Eugene and I went from a single-wide to a double-wide, and now we have the house that we live in now. And I just think that it's not government's role to provide housing. I feel like that we have enough Section 8 housing here in Putnam County. As a realtor, we, I have shown lots of houses in Putnam County and been able to help a lot of young couples coming into the county with USDA financing, HUD financing, FHA financing. So there are options out there to be able to help with some of the assistance programs, down payments, and the ship program. So there are options out there that helps people, but we definitely have to get some new, some more houses built in Putnam County, and that's where I'm at.
Leota, our next question in regards to animal control. That facility is always overcapacity. They are in desperate need of a makeover, to say the least. Your thoughts or plans for Putnam County animal control?
It is disappointing that that animal shelter hasn't been built yet. The county has $750,000 in their budget. They've had it for a few years to do that. The Citizens Committee has picked out a piece of property for that building to be built on, but we haven't gotten there yet. So my thought is that we need to build it. We're out for build now for, I guess, a design build. Not so sure how long that's going to take, but I definitely support getting it completed, and it's long past due. And I believe that the county's also working on trying to get some additional funds outside of their budget to add to the $750,000, but we definitely need to get it built.
Okay, thank you. And Jeff, your thoughts on improving animal control?
So picking up where Leota left off, you know, adding additional funds may or may not be necessary. We could have already moved this thing forward. The government typically has a problem with trying to move anything forward with any expediency. This is one of the situations where we could have moved this thing forward. I made a request of staff to get a construction manager hired. We could have hired a construction manager that is a general contractor that could have then turned around. My company had already provided the floor plan and the ADA accessibility requirements and the life safety requirements for the building. All we had to do is have somebody come in and hire the electrician to finish the electrical plans and plumber, blah, blah, blah. But it doesn't seem to be an urgency with most of the commissioners. Since I got elected, I have made this a priority, but there's, for whatever reason, there seems to be a sense that we just don't need to make these improvements. Our animal services is absolutely deplorable. If you've ever been out there, it's a horrible place to visit, let alone work. I'm glad that we have the adoption programs that we're able to have in and out of county, but at the same time, we have to consider our staff while we're considering the building itself.
There's another area in our community where it's very difficult for people to find health or help, and that is with substance abuse, mental health, homelessness, just to name a few. What can we do here in our county to make sure that people can get the help that they need or the services they need without having to go out of county or out of state?
So I hosted a forum last July where there was roughly 35 to 40 agencies that were represented. A judge was in there. We had the court system, LSF, Lutheran Family Services, Children Family Services, some of the NGOs that we've talked about. One of them was Flagler Care Connect. I reached out to them. They're in the process. We took the start of this conversations forum, and we've carried it forward, having monthly meetings the second Thursday of each month at 9:00 AM. And it's not a mandatory meeting. This is a meeting that people attend on their own, and we got this conversation started. What spun out of this, a part of the conversation one day, I said, you know what's missing here is we don't have any faith-based groups in the room. And then Cliff Lyta shows up, and now they're looking at, they're forming a faith-based summit that'll take place in October. These are the type of services that we really need to get help out there with. But regarding the one-stop shop, I'm all in favor of it. We have property at the county, but the county's not being very helpful coming up saying, look, we have this real estate available. We could help you guys and put you in it, because if we take one person out of jail and put them into recovery, we save $85 a day. If that person is out there making a living, they're paying their way, not being a burden on the taxpayer. So I don't know if that answers your question, but my time's up.
Thank you. Leota, same question.
You know, it's definitely a huge need that we have in Putnam County. I have a friend that just lost her second son to addiction, and it's really sad, the amount of people that addiction is, and substance abuse and mental health illnesses is affecting our community. It's sad, but we definitely have to get, we have to get those services here. You know, I saw recently in the newspaper where the sheriff's department had started the Jails Insight Recovery Pod, and I'm very proud of them for doing that. They've partnered with Shining Light Peer Services, Recovery Point, and some other organizations, and those, that kind of collaborative effort is what's going to need to take place in our community to have services available. I would like to see us have a facility here in Putnam County where they can intake and have people who want the help. But I am proud of the sheriff's department and what they've been doing lately. And I think those kind of partnerships with the faith-based organizations can make a huge difference in our community.
And if you are elected, what would you want to do to help the county move forward on better financial footing?
You know, certainly promoting smart growth. We have to have a good mixture between commercial development and residential development. That's going to continue to grow our tax base, and as our tax base grows, then we're going to see more revenue coming in, and that revenue is certainly going to help us get the things that we need in our community, like infrastructure and roads and stuff like that. And increasing trade schools in high school and at the community college level. Those are very important. My husband and I own a business that's a trade business. I mean, it's an automotive shop, and one of the things that we've always struggled with is getting in people who have skills and getting our students to understand that there's nothing wrong with having a skill. And it's, matter of fact, it's one of the things that can get you a six-figure job just as much as a four-year education can. And so we definitely have to have more trade skills available for students to tap into and improve our community.
And Jeff, if you're reelected, what would you want to do to help the county move forward on better financial footing?
So piggybacking what Ms. Wilkinson just said, I've been a proponent since before I got elected for getting trades into Putnam County. I think we need to have a vocational training center here. But as far as moving us forward on financial footing, we're going to have to, we're going to have to research and find alternative funding sources. The Advalorm assessment really doesn't work well in Putnam County when you have a large base of owners that really don't have a lot of valuation in their homes, and they're not looking to sell, so the next person comes in and buys it at the higher level. I think Amendment One, when it passed, had unintended consequences, and part of that is that you can only raise, the property value's 3%. So someone can buy a house 10 years ago for $50,000, and it can only go up 3% if it's homesteaded, which rises to the occasion of $65,000. So as the cost of doing business goes up, we are absolutely going to have to come up with alternative funding sources, looking to the public for the solutions, but that requires conversation. It also requires strategic planning. We've never gotten our strategic plan out and budgeted for that. Our budget this year does not include capital items, and if you included those, we would not be able to afford to fund our budget as it's presented with the capital items in there, like fire trucks and ambulances and dump trucks. Thank you.
So what role might your faith play in your service as county commissioner?
My faith keeps me grounded in my deliberations and my decisions as a county commissioner. I listen to the public, but I also pray, and I listen to God. And there are times when I feel like it would be easier for me just to vote along, to get along, but that is not what we're supposed to do. As Christians, we're supposed to be faithful. We're supposed to have our moral compass, and we're supposed to follow that. So, you know, it's, we just had the Roe v. Wade decision overturned at the federal level, and people asked me as a candidate last time, how do you feel about Roe v. Wade? I don't believe in abortion. I don't think that God is, that God made any mistakes. There's a lot of issues that I lend, I lean on my faith on, and I'm not afraid to talk about them publicly. I'm a conservative, I'm a Christian, and I'm a faithful individual. I'm faithful to the community, I'm faithful to my family, but more importantly, I'm faithful to the Lord.
And Leota, if you're elected, how would your faith play a role in your service as a county commissioner?
My faith is where I draw my family values from, my core ethics, my morals. I pray every day and try to do the best that I can do in my personal life and in my professional life, and I feel like that, you know, God, God wants us to be kind to people, regardless of who they are or what their position is. And treating people with kindness is one of the things that I feel like we have to do and that I try to do on a regular basis with everybody I meet, and that comes from my faith in God. And I'm a Christian. I was saved and baptized right here in Putnam County at the old Tabernacle Baptist Church by Pastor Lawrence Cothran, and I definitely think that faith is, it's just the moral compass that we have to go by every day.
Okay, thank you. Well, we've tried our best to ask questions on a broad variety of subjects, but is there anything else that you feel we should have been covering here? We'll give you a minute to address any of those.
Well, I'm going to take a minute to just say that I am excited and honored to receive some endorsements in the community. Just today, I'm glad to announce that I have the endorsement of Sheriff Gator Deloche. I also have the endorsement of US Congresswoman Kat Kimmick, Florida Senator Hudson, and Florida Senator Perry, along with State Representative Bobby Payne, and the Northeast Florida Association of Realtors. And I feel like that those endorsements I receive because of the work that I've done in the past six years at the House of Representatives, and I just want people to know about that. I'm very honored and humbled to receive those endorsements. Thank you.
And Jeff, any other areas of concern you think we should mention?
You know, Putnam County has 800 square miles of concern. We have a lot of great citizens that live here. We have people that are looking for change, that are willing to be part of the change and help with the change. I think citizens' involvement is going to be the single most important thing that any commission can bring to their community. Nighttime meetings would definitely be helpful. We get a lot of pushback from the public wanting to know why they can't attend meetings while they're working to support their families, and yet they have to support the government at the same time that they can't, and they're not allowed to participate in that. So going forward, strategic planning needs to be a key effort. The public drives the strategic planning. They write the vision for Putnam County. The vision should have been taken, turned into goals, objectives, and policies, and that's how we should be budgeting, but we're not. We're budgeting from a, let's go run out and put out these little fires today conversation and hope that Tallahassee and the federal government comes in and saves the day. I'm not a state person. I'm not running for state government. I'm not state government-trained, and I'm definitely not in favor of the federal government having any more input in our community than necessary. I am in favor of the citizens driving this. I'm in favor of all of our politics being local and not being so heavily dependent on the state and the federal government. Thank you.
Our final question, Jeff Rawls, why should people reelect you to serve on the county commission?
I think the answer's simple. I think that I've been, I've been true to the cause. Everything that I said when I ran, I've done. I will continue to be open and honest. If you don't like the way I say it, listen to what I'm saying, because nobody's challenging me on the issues. That's the ironic part. Being cordial, being friendly, being all that is one thing, but actually being able to get in there and have a robust conversation. People mistake a vibrant conversation with being rude. That's not being rude, that's being honest. And what's funny is, people will vote for dishonest politicians. I'm not a politician. Some of the people that support Ms. Wilkinson are not, in my estimation, the most honest people and not done the best for Putnam County. So I'm not looking for endorsements from out of town. I want my endorsements to come from the people in Putnam County. I think the major endorsement comes on the 23rd when the election happens, and I look forward to that day. Thank you.
Okay, and Leota Wilkinson, why should people elect you as the next county commissioner?
Thank you, Robin. Our two biggest resources in Putnam County are our people and our natural resources. And I have seen this community pull together in some of the toughest times and help each other out. I grew up here. I know a lot of the issues that we're facing here in Putnam County, and basically, I just want to leave Putnam County better than the way I found it. I feel like the relationships I've built at all different levels, including working with nonprofits here in Putnam County, will certainly help serve the Putnam County citizens. And I will listen and respond to people and will continue to work hard. I've gotten where I'm at in my life because of hard work ethics and doing the right thing, even when nobody's looking. It's called integrity.